Good evening, everybody. Happy September 1st. Thank you for joining us for our school board meeting today. And I would like to now call this order or this meeting to order. If you will please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And now, will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And now I will ask our clerk, please, for roll call of board members.
Does it work?
All right, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryan.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Worsberger.
Here.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever. Mr. Morris.
Present.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes, thank you. And now I would entertain a motion for approval of our agenda for the evening, please.
I move approval of our agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now we have our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. I do have one community member signed up to speak here in the media center. Mr. Koenig. Please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and address.
Good afternoon. David Koenig, history teacher at Lugo McGinnis Academy, parent of two this year, students at Greenbrier Elementary. I'd like to use my three minutes today to talk about teachers' rights to collective bargaining and why I care about it so deeply. As you all know, I'm fairly new to Charlottesville City Schools, but I've been a teacher for a pretty long time, since the last year of the previous millennium, to be exact. In those 23 years, I've seen an enormous amount of change in our nation's public schools and in the teaching profession. For the most part, those changes have not been positive ones. In the two decades that I've been a teacher, I have witnessed an ever-increasing emphasis on standardized testing and the proliferation of profiteering test prep companies that take precious time and energy away from creative teaching and learning. I've seen the de-professionalization of teaching via quick prep programs like Teach for America and Eli Broad's Educational Leadership Program, which instructs principals that teachers are not to be trusted and need to constantly have our feet held to the fire to do our job. There have also been more subtle erosions of teacher autonomy, such as the insistence on standardization of lesson planning and even the use of scripted lessons that conceive of teachers as merely tools of implementation rather than as creative planners. All of this is connected to the larger national project of privatization, which manifests itself in traumatic and destabilizing school closures and in the creation of undemocratic and unaccountable charter school systems. I don't intend this to be a list of complaints about this school division. Not all of them even apply here, at least not yet. Also, collective bargaining for Charlottesville teachers is not going to solve these national problems by itself. These problems exist in places where teachers have long enjoyed the right to collectively bargain contracts. But in my opinion, that is largely because most teachers' unions employ the business model of unionism and collective bargaining, in which teachers' voice is not really heard despite the recognition of our legal rights. Here, we have a chance to do it differently, to start from scratch, to organize and bargain for conditions that will make our schools better places for our students to learn. But to do that, we need this board to pass a resolution that doesn't limit our bargaining power to one or two narrow topics. I care so much about convincing this board to pass a fair resolution because I see the potential of a stronger teachers' union to empower and inspire us to raise our voices and to work in solidarity against the well-funded forces of privatization and standardization. I see its potential to save our public schools, to make them places that are empowering and inspiring for our students and our staff. And so if I seem frustrated by the pace of this process, or if I maybe even seem a little confrontational in response to efforts to place limits on our rights, it is not because I think you're standing in the way of us getting a raise or a better health insurance package. It is because I see this as a first step and an absolutely essential one towards building a better public education system for our kids. And I think that anyone who cares about that should support teachers' right to collective bargaining, not hesitantly or with words only, but enthusiastically and with concrete actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we look to anybody potentially signed up on Zoom, is there anybody else here in the media center who would like to make public comment? If so, please step forward, state your name, address, and remember you have three minutes for your comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlene Green.
And my name is Myrtle Hodgins.
And we are staff for the Piedmont Housing Alliance. First of all, I want to say thank you as a parent. I have a senior.
Thank God.
Who is having a really a positive start of the school year. And so thank you all for that. But I'm also the deputy director for Piedmont Housing Alliance. And so we are here to show our gratitude and appreciation for the manner in which the Charlottesville City School staff has helped inform our parents at Friendship Court about their options with transportation and answering all of their questions and making sure that they understand fully what their child needs in order to get to school. Those meetings started over the summer. And then with the start of school last week, I was on the property each morning, beginning on Wednesday, just to see how things were going. And the staff was amazing, very excited in how they showed our youth about, you know, the first few days of school. And then anything that cropped up in the way of a potential issue, Dr. Gurley was there. Other staff members were there, and I don't want to name everybody, but we were just overwhelmed with the amount of assistance. And so we just want to thank you for that and that continued assistance. And then we want to make sure that anything that you all need to help get our students at Friendship Court to school in any capacity, we are here to cooperate. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. All right, anybody else here in the media center who would like to step up to the podium for public comment? We do have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting, but I believe we have possibly somebody in Zoom signed up. Nancy Deutsch, if you're there.
Hi, thank you. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you so much. So first, I will start by also echoing my thanks. I'm also, I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Walker, and she has had a wonderful transition. And I am so grateful to all of the staff at Charlottesville City Schools and at Walker in particular for making that so. So under a really tough circumstance, I really appreciate how you all have made the transition to the school year so positive for students. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. So later on the agenda, you're going to hear an update about the Buford renovation project. And I'm really eager and excited to hear about the status. And I know the community is excited to see the plans and the progress. And I just wanted to say that, you know, it's been almost five months since the city council approved the 2023 budget. And there were 68.8 million budgeted to fund the renovation and reconfiguration of Buford Middle School. So after more than a decade of debate and dashed hopes, Charlottesville was, and I believe still really is, ready for this project to move forward. At the time of the budget vote back in April, Charlottesville United for Public Education praised it as a pivotal moment and part of the renewed promise to give Charlottesville children a high-quality education in a 21st century learning environment. We noted that a solid, functioning, and thriving community is one that invests in its children through the public school system. And I know I spoke a lot about the importance of the middle school years and of having a really high-quality middle school for our students. That all is still true, but we also know the harsh realities of inflation. And we expect that the same is going to be true of school construction costs. Should the costs of this renovation and reconfiguration project increase, as we know they might, we really expect the city to still fully support keeping the project moving to be completed on schedule and with the required funding. Postponing it, as we've done in the past, is only going to ensure that costs continue to mount. And we know we can't delay on the much-needed upgrades to our middle school. As we've said before, this really is an issue of equity, right? It bears repeating who Charlottesville City Schools, and in particular Buford and Walker, serve. So there are 4,200-plus students enrolled in CCS, nearly half of whom, about 46%, are considered economically disadvantaged according to census language and data. And that number increases to 56% of students at Walker and Buford. So I think it's really critical when we think about who is in Buford's and Walker's schools. In addition, students of color are overrepresented at Walker and Buford as compared to other schools. 62% of fifth and eighth, fifth through eighth graders in Charlottesville City Schools are students of color. So last year's budget cycle had the added benefit of really bringing together advocates for affordable housing and public education and uniting the community behind the notion that these two issues go hand in hand to help us break the cycle of generational poverty in Charlottesville. So the trajectory of the educational journey for students in our community depends on how we invest in and show up for them. We showed up for them last spring and will do it again. We look forward to the update and we hope that you will continue to support the renovation. Thank you so much for your time tonight and for your service to the city.
Thank you. Anybody else signed up through Zoom? So I believe there is somebody else, and I couldn't hear. So if you'll please state your name, that's okay. State your name and address. And remember, you are limited to three minutes, please.
Am I on now?
Yes.
All right. My name is Rich Falker. I'm a parent of two students at BME. And this is my first time speaking before the school board meeting. I actually care a lot about the topic I'm about to speak on, but up through now, I have had great confidence in the board, the school staff and administration's abilities to handle this in a way that keeps everyone, our kids and our communities, safe. The topic I want to speak about is COVID-19 and safety procedures that we will or won't be maintaining. I was really kind of shocked on coming back to school for the fall to find out that lunchtime would no longer be outdoors where it would be safe for the children to be unmasked, but in cafeterias again. And I understand the reason for this is because the federal government has taken away the relaxations to the lunch program that made it possible to easily have lunches outdoors. And I'm also concerned seeing how how many fewer students are masking up this year. My children and family, we're not high-risk ourselves, but we are backup caregiver for somebody who is. This pandemic is not over. Looking at the nationwide figures for the past few days, it's been around 500 deaths every single day from COVID. The numbers are still way up there and the pandemic is still going on. The, I'm really thankful to be living in Charlottesville where the school board, the administration, staff, teachers, kids, parents, everyone have done such a great job doing what's necessary to keep our own families and one another and our community safe. And I just want to express that I hope this can continue. I hope we can build on what we're doing to keep making the spaces safe, to not let up our guard and just let this pandemic rip. We've done so great so far, and I want to see us keep on doing that. I want to see us keep masking. I know we lost the ability to require students to do it, but I want to see all our adults continue to do this, continue to set good examples, and do whatever else we can to make these spaces safer when some of our options have been taken from us at the state and federal levels. So that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, Mr. Falker. All right, anybody else signed up either in Zoom or in the media center? And again, please keep in mind, we do have another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. All right, thank you. We will move on. Next, if I could, have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions, comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And next, I think Dr. Gurley has some announcements.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, I would like to, we have had some new hires over the summer, and we also have some new hires that are administrative, new hires that were included in tonight's personnel report. So I would like to, I did ask Ms. Lewis, did have some of those employees to come in, and some of those employees were hired over the summer. And so I want to make sure that we acknowledge all of those individuals. We did hire for a professional learning coordinator, and that's Ms. Jessica Ford. She is not with us, but I do want to highlight her this evening. Again, she's our professional learning coordinator. And she came to us from Atlanta City Public Schools, where she was the K-8 math instructional coach. And she brought with her an extensive amount of professional development. And we saw that when she did the presentation last month for us with the PL plan. She served as a mathematics, a master mathematics teacher for Atlanta Public Schools. And she's also served in some STEM and intervention roles. And so we do welcome her and all the experience that she brings to the position. Most recently, on our last personnel report, we did have Ms. Natalie Farrell. Are you with us? I thought I saw you. If you want to stand for us, welcome. And I want to tell you a little bit about her. She is our, oh my God, I just had a blank. She, math, she's our math, because I said math. She's our math coordinator. And she also brought with her an extensive amount of experience. When I heard the feedback from the committee, they raved. And so she served most recently as a K-12 mathematics coordinator. She's been a senior administrator. She served as an assistant principal. A little thing that I looked, as I looked at her resume, she's currently working on a doctorate over at UVA. And just brings with her just a lot of educational experience. And we know that she's going to do exceptional things, and so we would like to welcome her as well. Thank you so much. We had, with the promotion of Ms. Chantel Beverly, came a vacancy over at Greenbrier Elementary. And so we were able to steal a sitting assistant principal, Mr. Matthew Farley. Would you want to, if you would stand for us? Mr. Mr. Farley comes to us, he was an assistant principal, had served as an assistant principal in another city school, has served as a teacher at the high school level, has done some work as an instructional coach. And I will tell you that I had the opportunity to sit with him during his second interview, and I was very impressed. Ms. Frickie had made a recommendation, and she said, we got to get him today. And I said, if you believe in him, I believe in him. And so we were very impressed by him, and we welcome you. Thank you. And he's already jumped in. And we've, I follow him on Twitter, seen him in the building, and he's doing a lot of great things. So welcome. We also, I want to acknowledge, we had an internal transfer, and that was Mr. John Kronstein. And Mr. Kronstein is not with us, but he did go over to Johnson Elementary from Buford Elementary School as the assistant principal over there with Ms. Thompson. And we know he's going to do great things over there. He's been with us for quite some time. I think, I don't know if Mr. Mountjoy is here, but Mr. Mountjoy is our director of student activities here at the high school. And I know he's been very busy. He's been in the role since the summer, and he's done a lot of great things for us already. But he brought experience as a coordinator, as an assistant, as an interim assistant principal, a wealth of, a wealth of things, of extensive, extensive educational background. And so we thank him, and we welcome him also. Over at, we do have, we have Ms. Thompson, I think, we have Ms. Thompson, Kim Thompson, I thought of sorry back there. Ms. Thompson joined us. She was one of our very own Charlottesville High School Black Knights and had been with us in the mathematics department. So that was a big loss to our mathematics department. But most certainly, it was a, it was a gain for us. And so Ms., she served as a gear up coordinator. She actually did her student teaching. I remember doing her second interview, she did her student teaching at Buford Middle School. And so she's bringing an extensive amount of knowledge to that position. I think when I looked on her resume, she is an alumni of North Carolina Central A&amp;T. So welcome, and we know she's going to do great things in that position. Most recently, on this evening's board report, we have our new director of, I'm sorry, new supervisor of exceptional education, Dr. Angela Bracy. We welcome Dr. Bracy. She comes to us most recently from Prince George's County, Maryland, where she was a special education coordinator. Dr. Bracy has, most of her experience is in Virginia. She's served in mostly urban school divisions as an instructional, instructional coach, instructional coordinator. She's done some adjunct professoring. And she's also been an assistant principal, but brings a wealth of experience. And it looks like she is also a, well, no, she's not also. She's a graduate of North Carolina Central A&amp;T. So we do welcome Dr. Bracy. North Carolina Central. Yes, and then we do have one more, but we'll recognize her because I don't think she made this evening. We have another assistant principal at Buford Middle School who's not on our list, and I don't think she's not here. Okay, I'll make sure we get her this evening. Holly Russell, she joined us too. She, she joined us as a classroom teacher, and she's new to Buford. So we'll make sure we get her next month. We want, I just want to thank all of you all for joining us. People have choices. And I am so glad that you chose Charlottesville City Schools, and you make this the choice for your life, the rest of the remainder of your lifetime, your career, your career. Thank you all. So we will move on to, we will move on to action items. We have Beth Chuck. She will bring forth our transgender policy.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Gurley. At the August 4th meeting, Denise Johnson and I shared with you our proposed policy for the treatment of students who identify as transgender or non-binary. And this evening, I'm asking for the board to approve this policy. And just for the record and for folks who may be watching at home, just as a reminder, this policy does not bring any new practices or protocols, but it brings all this guidance into one place, into one policy and into one regulation for clarity and consistency. Once this policy is approved, we will continue rolling out further training. We've had some excellent training this year already from UVA for our principals for a whole, in a variety of settings. And I want to reaffirm that though we feel good about this policy, and though we feel good about these regulations, we will just continue to watch and to learn. I literally, on a personal note, just spoke with some friends of mine who went through this very process in one of our schools this summer. And just even from that conversation, have learned some things like, hmm, okay, we might want to adjust this. We might want to follow up on that. And so I think that's just going to be the posture moving forward, is that we're going to keep learning and just learn to do better and learn to support our students better.
Thank you. Can we get a motion for that, please?
Yeah, I would like to move that we approve the transgender, non-binary student policy.
I would like to second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Beth Powell. She'll bring back our admission of non-resident students.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Gurley, the update for the non-resident policy was, for the most part, a technical update. There was a recognition of a title change of someone who's involved in that process, me. And then the big thing was, or the more significant piece, was just acknowledgement that we do sometimes allow for payment plans. And then we want to, in conjunction with that, set ourselves up to be able to take credit card payments in the future. We don't have all that worked out yet, but we would like to present that, to provide that option when we do have all the details worked out. So that's all there was for that update.
Thank you. Motion, please.
I move that we approve the admission of non-resident students policy.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, and also Ms. Powell will bring, she presented last month our security camera policy, and she will be seeking approval for that as well.
That's correct. Thank you, Dr. Gurley. This is a new policy for us, and it's just, it goes hand in hand with our expansion and enhancements of our video systems as part of our overall security systems infrastructure. And so we wanted just to have a policy to be transparent about who can access video and what we use it for and what it is not used for. So that's all in there.
And the motion, please.
I move approval of the policy regarding security cameras and video recordings.
Well, second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, next will be myself along with Dr. Baptist, who is participating virtually.
Hello?
Oh, there's a really bad lag. I may have to, I may have to do it if that, if she's not. Can you hear me, Dr. Baptist?
I'm Dr. Gurley. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're, you're cutting in and out.
Dr. Gurley.
Okay, maybe that's, let's, let's go, let's try that one more time. Sounds like you may have fixed it.
Try again, Dr. Baptist.
Madam Chair of the Board, Dr. Gurley, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of, members of the Board, Dr. Gurley, can you hear me now?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I was asked to give the board a brief update on where we are with COVID at this point. And there is one document that is being displayed now to really hone in on how the data that we receive regarding COVID has changed for this year. It was before we were getting daily information from Virginia Department of Health. We're now getting that bi-monthly at the meetings at I-10. Our transmission levels, as you may remember, we were getting those daily. We are getting those weekly now from CDC. I did just check a few minutes ago to see if the CDC had updated the transmission levels for this week. Because they do that on Thursday evenings and they have just moved Charlottesville to high from medium. We were medium last week. This week we're high. The UVA tracker, which we also depended on to, to see hospitalizations and other information that has been discontinued. I still am representing the school system at the Blue Ridge meetings that were weekly and now they're bi-monthly. So we're still getting some data, but the data is not coming as consistently and rapidly as we had for last year. And I'd ask if there are any questions about, about this.
Dr. Baptist, I'm wondering if you have a sense of whether the, the transmission levels are related to the return of UVA students to the area?
That's difficult to say because so many cases now are not being reported. People who are doing. The, the rapid test, the most part are not reporting those. So I don't know that our transmission to high is UVA or if it's just a combination in the community. But as we were reminded last year, UVA students are living in our community. So we need to think of them as part of Charlottesville.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Baptist? Sorry, and I, it's my understanding, Dr. Baptist, that UVA is not tracking cases anymore, correct?
No, they discontinued their track or sometime, maybe near the end of the spring semester. So I don't know whether they will start that again. Now that the students are back and the community seems to be in an uptick, but I haven't heard anything about it resuming.
Thank you. I, I'm just curious, could you quickly, so we haven't changed, we still have tests to stay. We have testing available at each of the schools, which is on our website. Anything else changed or any updates as far as that related to what we're doing here in the schools?
We're still doing tests to stay, although at the state level, the test to stay program is, is somewhat being discontinued. They're still giving us tests and part of our mitigation is that families may use tests that we have for tests to stay. If they want to do that, they're not required to do it, but we do have the test. We also have tests that we had from the other rapid test program we had last year. So we have a multitude of rapid tests that are available to each of the schools and to families as needed. We are still doing the PCR test. Schedule this year is on Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. I've already gotten the results from today's testing. So the company that we're working with is doing a great job of getting those results for us. But we're, we're pretty much doing the same testing that we did last year.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who, who continues to. Support that, you know, and as long as we can continue offering that to our families and staff, I think that's wonderful.
Yes.
So memorandum of understanding is that we will have access to the program through June of 23, unless something major changes. But it, I think it has been a wonderful program for our community. And I applaud Beth Chuck for all the many reminders that she has given to families in the community about signing up for various programs.
Dr. Craft? Just, yeah, one, one other question. And this is very recent, but I wondered if we were giving any thought to offering the newly constructed booster shots. Within the division, having any of these events, vaccination clinics.
The, the new booster was mentioned in this week's meeting with Blue Ridge Health Department. And I know that the Health Department is planning clinics. I will be in touch with the Health Department to see if they want to use one of our sites as a clinic. If they do, then we certainly would support it and, and be glad to host it. It's more up to Blue Ridge as to whether they feel like they've got the resources to take the shot clinics out into the community. If they need to keep them at fewer sites. But if they're willing to do it, then I'm certainly willing to work with them to set it up.
Okay, wonderful.
Any other questions? Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, Dr. Baptist, you mentioned that we are currently in the red. And that was as of today?
Yes, sir. The CDC does their transmission level on Thursday evenings. And so since this meeting has started, I checked and they have moved us to high for this week.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Baptist? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. And I also want to say before I begin, just to, just to address the, this statement made by the parent earlier. That most certainly we are going to continue all mitigation efforts. And I know his concern about the students, particularly the kindergarten students that are eating in the cafeteria at Burnley Moran. And, and that's largely due to the waivers. The waivers did expire for school lunches. So the flexibility of how students could eat changed significantly. So at that school, for example, those, those students have to travel from the lower level up to the top level. And their principal did put a lot of thought into like, is, it's going to be a lot for them to try to travel back down the steps with, you know, being tiny. And taking those trays back down the steps. So those things were taken into consideration. But we also wanted to also remember is that they have the, so that one grade level has the entire cafeteria. So we don't have to stack students. And that's the case at most of the schools. I know I'd gotten a question from a family at Venable as well. And the students don't, they're not stacked on top of one another. So they can, they do have the option to spread them out. So while it is not ideal, the, using our filtration, we are trying to. We will definitely try to keep our students as safe as we can with all of the, with all the available resources. And so to that end, I want to, I want to add to that I'm. What I stand before you this evening, we have received a lot of emails. And I've had a lot of in-person, in-person conversations with, with staff members with regards to masking. And I think our staff and our families are at all different ends of the spectrum. And, and so I know we have been very thoughtful about how we keep our families safe. And so, but again, you know, I am everyone superintendent. And so, and the spirit of how do I do what's next? How do I move forward with, when, when do we decide whether or not? Or when do I recommend that we don't wear masks anymore? And so I did reach out to Ms. Taylor and I think she's here in the audience with us. I did reach out to Ms. Taylor because we have focused a lot on people's voices. And, and I know that, you know, every voice matters. And, and so I asked if she would just gather, just gather the voices of our, our staff members. And poll them and see what, what do they want? And so she developed a survey and it had some open-ended and closed-ended questions with regards to what would they like to see next? And I think ultimately, what the recommendation of the Charlottesville Education Association. And I'll just read the, what was shared that the Education Association is recommending that employees have the option to decide whether they want to wear a mask. And what I did from that recommendation, I said, well, we have, we do have a holiday, we have a holiday that's coming up this weekend. And I, so I said, well, let's do 10 days out from that. It seemed like that was reasonable. And so what I added to her recommendation is that I recommend that this takes effect Friday, September 16th. Which is 10 days after the Labor Day holiday. And, but I also want to be very clear that just as we have done for teachers. I'm sorry, just as we've done for students, that we would continue to strongly encourage people, you know, to wear masks. If people chose not to wear masks. And this is whether, this is if the board approves this recommendation, that we will still do what we do for students. We would continue to recommend, you know, we are, as Dr. Baptist just said, we are in a, in a time, a moment of high transmission. And so people will have the choice whether they wear a mask or not. And I think that that's, you know. It's one that's, you know, you have to take very seriously. And so this is my recommendation and I know it's been posted and I know people have seen it, the public has seen it. And we've gotten questions and what, what does this look like? But ultimately, I think this is the discussion that we have this evening. So it is the recommendation on the floor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. What I'd like to do now is just open it up to board members if you have questions or comments.
You can take that off the screen.
So we'll start with Ms. Dooley.
Sure. I just want to note that we're not recommending that teachers not wear a mask. We are simply providing it to be a choice. And so just want to be clear in that language. You know, this is a fluid situation is going to continue to, to be so. And nothing precludes an adult from wearing a mask or a student wearing a mask should they choose to do so. If we do move forward with passing this proposal. And, you know, my feelings remain the same as they did when this came before us in the spring. I feel strongly that teachers should have the choice. They should have the ability to model for students. You know, the fluid, the fluidity of the situation when transmission is high. We hope that they would choose to wear a mask. Again, but the choice. You know, later this evening, we're going to be reviewing data that paints, you know, not a great picture, a pretty concerning picture. And I, for one, am in favor of listening to teachers and, you know, enabling them every opportunity. Affording them every opportunity to best connect and instruct students. And in the conversations that I've had and the emails that I've received, masks are a barrier to that. And so I would intend to vote yes on this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. Dr. Craft?
I am also in support of this recommendation. I do feel like, I mean, I know it's a really difficult situation for all of us. And, you know, more than anything, we want everybody to be as safe as possible. I do think now, you know, we're in a very different situation now with, you know, the vaccinations, the testing and all of the options, the treatment options available for COVID. So that is one factor. I do feel like it's really important to give teachers and other staff members a choice in this matter, an option. And it's just sort of like I exercise my options when I go certain places and I make choices about wearing my mask or not wearing my mask. And, and I feel like our, you know, our teachers are going to use good judgment. In making their own decisions about when might it be okay to pull down the mask for instructional purposes? And when is it really important to keep it on? And so. You know, for me, that is, that is an important factor. And I just think it's, it's how we can, it's how I think we're, we need to move forward with this. I think we are one of perhaps two divisions now in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia that still has this. And I was reading, the other one is Richmond City and Richmond City is. I think maintaining their mandate at the moment only when their transmission level is high. But they're, anyway, they're in, they're where we are. They're, they're working on modifying that. But every other division in the state now does not have that mandate. And I, I feel like it's time for us to, you know, just, just move forward with this. And, and I don't think, I don't feel like we're putting our students at, at great risk by doing this. I just think they're living in the world and in the community, just like the rest of us. And, and exercising good judgment is important. And I think allowing teachers, I guess Ms. Dooley said, allowing teachers to. Remove some barriers to instruction that I think the masks impose. I think now is also very important for our students. So I will vote yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to, before we move forward, I just want to do a point of order. That we have to do the motion first and then call for the discussion. So before we discuss, we need, there needs to be a motion.
All right, I'm, I'm going to move that, move approval of the superintendent's recommendations regarding masking for teachers and staff.
Thank you, sir.
And now this is.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. No comment? Mr. Bryant?
I'm Dr. Gurley. I have really been praying over this a lot. I'm an educator. I understand. I get it. But what really concerns me is that if we make the mask optional for teachers. What I really would like to know, what would be the backup plan? If for any reason teachers and students get sick in mass numbers? What is going to be the backup plan to cover those classes? I think about those students who may be immunocompromised, teachers may be immunocompromised. I just have a lot of questions. This has really been heavy on my heart. I don't have a problem with being optional with masks. But my concern is if, and we're in the high transmission now, meaning that there are a lot of COVID cases out there. So I just need to know what the backup plan is going to be.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Bryant. And I, I think that with everything that, with, with anything, there are unintended consequences. And so I hope it's, you know, we've talked as a team and I, you know, and I would assume that, you know, the collective teacher units. Have had similar conversations that, you know, there are some unintended consequences to all decision, decisions that are being made. And, and I think, you know, when we look at what the blind spots in this instance, I know we've talked about. I know we've had conversations about coverage. And, and you know, we've tried to, we've done a very good job of trying to bring on more substitutes. I will tell you that the volume of substitute applicants has been really high, very high. But we've tried to keep teachers from subbing. So there are some unintended consequences and potential, and potential blind spots that, and wanting the mask to be optional. You know, that this could be one of those things where teachers could potentially be called to move, I mean, called to sub. Because, you know, a certain number of students on their, teachers on their team may be COVID positive. And we definitely don't want to have any thoughts about, you know, pivoting to virtual. Because we understand what the unintended consequences of, of those, you know, it just widen the gaps for us of our most, for some of our most vulnerable groups. So there are unintended consequences and, and I'm going to be very transparent about that. But I think that as I've heard people say is that. But I think that as I've heard people say is that, you know, in this, we have to make decisions that are good for the collective group. And so if it is high transmission, you know, I would hope that you would want to wear a mask because it does put you at risk. I mean, this is a barrier from, you know, mitigating COVID-19. So I think, and as Ms. Dooley said, I'm definitely not telling anyone that, you know, now is the time where you take your mask off. You know, you have that option. And if you, if you make that choice, then there are unintended consequences to that. You know, but I think you have to win both ways. I think, you know, some people will say on the other end, what we've seen in emails, some people will say, well, I've worn a mask and I caught COVID. But most certainly, this is one of the mitigating defenses. So the, the plan is people may have to sub when they don't want to sub. And they may be called to do duties that they don't want to do because those positions have been vacated by someone who's now quarantining because they have COVID-19.
Any other questions, Mr. Bryant? Ms. Bryson Morrisberger?
My question is, is there any room to do a compromise where masks can be optional when we're in the medium and the low transmission times and require them when we're in the red and there is high transmission?
I think most certainly that the, if it's the pleasure of the board, that that motion can most certainly be modified. If, you know, if, if that's the pleasure of the board, I mean, I think that most certainly, I mean, it's what you would want someone to do if they were mask optional. You would want them to, you would hope that if it's red, if we're in high transmission, that they were, that they're wearing a mask as a mitigating factor. I mean, so most certainly, the motion could be amended to, if you want to require teachers to wear a mask when it's high, then they wear a mask when it's high, and then in others, when it's in medium to low, then they can have the option to whether they wanted to wear a mask. Most certainly, that's an option.
Would anyone be open to a friendly amendment to add that it is required during high transmission times and optional during medium and low transmission times?
Yeah, I think that's, you would have to ask Ms. Dooley if she would be agreeable to that.
Well, I made, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Kraft?
And I would, I would not be agreeable to that. I would be agreeable to adding that we would strongly recommend that masks be worn during periods of high transmission. But I would not support requirement to, to my motion.
Any other comments?
Well, I mean, I recognize that I am in the minority for this because the kids in schools are not wearing the mask. So I don't know if the one more person in the class, this teacher not wearing the mask, dramatically increases transmission, but the teacher is the most important person in the class. And so there are unintended consequences for the couple of students who do feel like they need to wear a mask or just holding on and at least have the teacher wearing the mask as the backup. So, yeah, that's all I have.
So of course I have some comments. But thank you all for your comments, your thoughtful comments. I appreciate that. I do want to acknowledge the communication that we have received from everybody regarding masks in our schools. As I'm sure all of the board members, I've heard comments in favor of being mask optional and comments in favor of continued masking for different reasons. I acknowledge that this has been an extremely long two and a half years and then some. I acknowledge that wearing a mask every day for eight hours or more is hard. There has been significant headway scientifically with the development of vaccines and boosters in the last two and a half years. Air quality and ventilation is key, and we must continue to prioritize this. The science and research continues to evolve specific to COVID risks and long COVID. And we do know that the systems compromised include respiratory, cardiovascular, musculoskeletal, and neurological. There continue to be, and as we've heard earlier, four to 500 COVID deaths each day in the United States currently. Since the beginning of school here in Charlottesville City Schools, we have had, as of today, I just looked, 65 COVID positive cases reported to the schools. And I do want to say thank you for continuing to run the dashboard and the numbers. I think that's important. I think it's also important that we all, students, staff members, board members, acknowledge that we have Charlottesville City Schools students and staff members, current staff members who have lost family members, lost parents to COVID within the last year. So I mean, it has touched people here locally. I'd like to offer a reminder that many people are contagious and asymptomatic spreaders. I'd like to also offer a reminder that national and state level policymakers have failed the public in regards to dealing with this public health crisis. Also a reminder that many and most people still test positive way past the five days that the CDC recommends as okay to return to work and resume your life. I acknowledge the fact that the majority of the surveyed want, surveyed want the choice to be mask optional. Honestly, my concern with this process is that I'm worried and concerned about those whose voices aren't reflected in this recommendation. And I guess this is where the trust comes into play. Trusting that we, Charlottesville City Schools and as a community, honor the we and trusting that we aren't more focused on me. Trusting that we continue to respect each other as coworkers and fellow human beings. Honestly, this is, this is where I struggle. Let's please not lose sight of the work that we have done addressing the disparities and inequities, whether it be educational inequities, food insecurities, housing, and health inequities. I'm sure everyone has seen the visual graphic, and I think it's a great one. It's one of my favorite of the two people facing each other. And, and it depicts the flow of airborne particles when neither of those people are masked, when one person is masked, and then again, when both are masked. It's a great visual. So if you haven't seen it, please look it up. And it is scientifically proven that masks do protect and do decrease the risks of contracting COVID and other airborne illnesses. I continue to support masking as, as it is relatively low cost and an effective intervention that can protect both students and staff from substantial illness and loss of in-person days in school. We know how important the in-person days in school are for both. I believe it is within the purview of this board to ensure there are safe and healthy work environments, spaces, and conditions for every person within our physical buildings. And I do take this responsibility very seriously. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question about the recommendation? The mask optional, if approved, I guess we would still be, do we need to include in here the CDC recommendations for, you know, you can return to work five days after testing positive or after symptoms if you can wear a mask for days six through 10?
I mean, that's listed separately.
Yeah, that's currently listed.
So it doesn't need to be here. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. We've each had the opportunity to provide comment. So I would like to ask a clerk for a recorded voice vote, please. And again, let me just, so this is, we're asking to approve the recommendation for staff to be mask optional is what the motion is.
Starting September 16th.
And can we, can we add the clause that we, we strongly recommend? It's in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Move this clause again.
That we would strongly recommend mask wearing when we're in areas, when we're in periods of high transmission, medium, or, medium or high.
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Reluctantly, yes.
Ms. Bryson Morrisberger?
Yes.
Ms. Dooley?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
No. Thank you. So that passes. All right, we're now moving on to items for discussion.
We will have, Ms., I'm sorry, Dr. Odie will bring us the student representative to the school board.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening. I'd like to start by saying Mr. Pitt, our new principal here at CHS, normally would be here with me this evening to recognize our, and introduce our student representatives. But he does send his regrets for not being here this evening to highlight these great students. He truly wishes he could be here, but he did have a conflict. So in his stead, I am honored to introduce the 2022, 2023 student representatives to the board. Two of our three students are here this evening, and one is unable to attend tonight due to a death in the family, unfortunately. So let's see, tonight we have with us, and I will ask them to stand when I introduce these wonderful ladies. Tonight we have with us Ms. Allison Byrd. Allison is a well-rounded 10th grade student here at CHS. And she, I, I sent an email to these ladies and, and to the gentlemen to say, just tell me a little bit about what you do, what you like, something about you to share with the board. And so Allison just shared that she is very excited to serve as a student representative to the board. Some things that she does, she runs cross-country track, participates in bacon, the Young Feminist Group, the CHS Debate Team, and she is a Kindness Cafe Ambassador. So we welcome Allison, and Allison will be the representative that serves for the first portion of the year. So for October, November, and December, welcome Allison. If we can give her a round of applause. Okay, and our next ambassador is Ms. Vivian Wong. Vivian is a 12th grade student here at CHS. And she also responded with some amazing things that she does to keep herself busy. Vivian enjoys history and political science. She's going to go to college and study something in that area. She has been involved in the girls' soccer team here, the String Ensemble, the National Honor Society Key Club, and the Phenomenal Visual Arts Program, she said. She volunteers, works, plays the cello, and draws. And she co-founded the Asian Student Alliance here at CHS and looks forward to leading in that capacity. She started the Virginia Youth Voter Awareness Initiative, and she currently serves as the youth representative on the Charlottesville Sister Cities Commission. So she's got a lot going on too, and let's please welcome her. Vivian will be serving in the second three months, so January, February, and March of 2023. Our third ambassador, you know him well, Jashawn Johnson, has served as a student representative previously. I believe my first year here in 2020 and 2021 when we were virtual. Yes, and he did a great job. So we know that he'll do another great job as well. Again, he does share his apologies for not being here today. And he shared some things that he's doing. He's a very busy young man as well. He says that he is the ninth, he was the ninth grade SCA president, the 10th grade SCA president, the Delta Achievement Award recipient, the first freshman student school board representative. Because he was in ninth grade. Creator of the Black Excellence in the Community webinar. He's mentored, he's mentored over 20 kids in five years. Love No Ego Youth of the Month recipient. And he established a program at Burnham Moran to help kids with incarcerated parents. So he's got a lot of great things going on. I think that we are, let's give him a round of applause as well. We look forward to having Jashawn the, the last three months, that would be April, May, and June. So, you know, we are so fortunate to have such a wonderful group of student representatives that will be part of our board this year. They, they welcomed me today and greeted me and sort of got a little orientation of, of, of the area. So I'm excited about the outstanding group that we will have joining us this year. And if there are any questions for them, if you need anything from them, that will be it for me. Thank you. Welcome, all of you. Look forward to having you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, this is an action item. I'm sorry. So I need a motion.
Yes, yes, we, we are asking for action to accept our wonderful group.
I move to approve the proposed student, student representatives.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Hey, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I am going to ask Ms. Powell, I think, and Mr. Knox to come forward with our middle school project update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. We are very excited to be here this evening to talk about the middle school project. We're very fortunate to have Wick Knox, principal with VMDO Architects here. He'll be leading this presentation. We also have Mike Goddard here from City Facilities Development. And there's a lot of exciting news to provide regarding project plans, the phasing information. I think the community will find very interesting, and we also have the latest project estimates. So while Leslie is bringing up the presentation, I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Knox.
Thank you. Good evening. How's everybody doing? I haven't had a chance to talk to you since February, I think. We, after the city council approved the project to move forward, we worked, worked out the next phase and started working about May 1st. So we had three months of work, and we sent it off for a cost estimate, and we've been reviewing that. And this is kind of our unveiling of what we've been up to for those three months and kind of our first public update on, on all things about the project. Do you want to add anything before we get going, Mike?
No, I'm happy to let you run the show, and I'm, I'm just here for questions relative to the city side of things.
Okay, let's get into this. So I want, I'll start with schedule. This is a slide you've seen before. So the yellow line represents where we are in this process. We've been talking about this. It, it was first studied extensively in 2008, so we have a pretty long time span here that we've been working on. We're still at it. So zooming in a little bit, you can see we've, we've still got about four years. We're talking about completing this project in time for the opening of the 2026, 2027 school year. And you can see where we are in the process, and that red dash line represents kind of our current phase. And so I will blow that up and we'll see where we are now. So here we are at the 1st of September. And so I will blow that up and we'll see where we are now. So here we are at the 1st of September. Uh, we've just gotten our estimate of roughly the third, the 60% design. And, um, we will go from there, and things will really pick up speed here. We will, the goal is to get this out to bid February 1st because we all think it's really important that we have a price back from a contractor before the city council finalizes their budget decisions next year. That means we have to hit that date, which means there's a lot of stuff that we have to do, Mike and I have to work on, um, to get our documents ready and get them reviewed and get them signed off by everyone that, that has, needs to have a say and incident on them. Really this fall. And so we're buttoning things up in January and getting it out the door in February. Um, let's talk, let's go straight to that estimate. So in, in February, the last time we estimated, it was the 30% design. The entire project that we were proposing was $76.8 million. That included doing the auditorium building. What got approved by city council was to proceed designing the whole project so we could bid it and see where we ended up. And bid the auditorium building as well as certain site amenities as alternates. So we would have some choices and some flexibility on bid day. The, at the time, that was estimated to be 68.8. So what was estimated at 68.8 then is now 75.3. And the total project is $82 million. So, so I, I don't think I have to explain to anyone about the inflation that has occurred in the economy. But there's two things that have occurred here. The, the price for all of the elements in the project has gone up and is estimated higher. And then the escalation factor of how much further they're gonna go up between now and when the, when a contractor gives us a bid, that also has gone up. So both those things are conspiring on us to get us to this point. I want to put it in some context of what's going on. Uh, Mike and I were actually braced for much worse news than, than this because of, this is what we've seen this month, uh, or in the month of August. So Loudoun County is building a middle school for, um, over 1,400 students. That went to bid in July. The bids were due this month. They had one bidder. It was $23.5 million over the budget, and this is a big budget. They had a budgeted $99 million, $84 million of that was for the construction contract. The bid was also only good for 30 days, and the contractor was sweating that because the subs were, didn't want to commit to holding prices even for 30 days. Normal is 90 days. So the school board there made the decision to award $110 million contract to build this middle school. And they had to make a decision quickly, otherwise it would, it would, the option's gone. In Fredericksburg, they're in a design phase. They're kind of where we were back in February. They had a $57 million budget. Their estimate came in $20 million over that for a school for 950 students. And then just a week or two ago, in North Hampton County, um, over on the eastern shore, eastern side of the state, they, uh, put out a middle school, high school, that's a very common model in some of the smaller school districts on that side of the Commonwealth. They had approved it to go to bid in March with a $61.5 million estimate. That was $7 million higher than the estimate from four months earlier, but they were nervous about that. They got two bids, $84 million and $85 million. So we're seeing just unbelievable inflation in the market these days. So that's kind of reflected here. You remember last year and this past winter, we were talking about, you know, does inflation stay this high and then go back to something normal, or does it continue to go up? So last year it was 13.5%. This is Virginia school, uh, inflation. This year is not over yet, but it is projected, at least, um, the, the, the group that does the state projects, uh, projects for the Commonwealth, they're predicting construction costs to be 16% this year. We'll see where we, where we, where we actually end up. But to put that in a little context, uh, and the picture of me is blocking the numbers up there on the screen. But if you take this $50 million that we came out of 2018, it's kind of saying, you know, here's a number we should start talking about, whether it covered proper scope or not. At the end of this year, it would be $67 million. There we go. And if we account for another 10% of inflation for 2023, we're at $74.3 million, just taking that number. Remember, we started at the retreat in 2021, we talked a lot about, a lot about just the math exercise of what this is. So a little context there. So what are we doing about this? Uh, well, our first step was to review the estimate, um, with, uh, Mike and his team and my team and our consultants. Sometimes, uh, you don't like the results of the work that you put in, the original estimate. So we're about $6.5 million over the 68.8. We were originally about $4.5 million over, and we found things that they missed. So our estimate went up by $2 million, but that's the, that's the funny thing about the truth. Sometimes it, it works for you and sometimes it doesn't, but you have to face it. So once we had that and we had an idea of, um, where we were, we sat down and informed both the city and the C, and CCS leadership. And I know that Dr. Gurley has had a chance to talk to the city manager and inform there, them about where we were. So hopefully, everybody understood before this public, uh, unveiling of this, where we are. We've also kind of identified about $1.2 million in cost reductions that we all think are acceptable, that we can do. We're also looking at procuring the Walker scope separately instead of bidding it as part of this. One, it could be bid a year or two later because that's the last phase of this. Two, it seemed like in the estimate it was driving our cost up quite a bit. It actually went from about $700,000 to 1.3 million. And all we're doing is putting in a ramp and some fencing to try to get from Building A down to the playground area. So it seemed like that was driving the cost up more than it should. So we want to do that through the school modernization program and identify some different funds. And then we also have the options of not building things that people want. The garden, the basketball courts, the walking track around the field, an outdoor classroom. If we do all those things, we're at about 71.9, so a little closer to our 68.8. And then we're gonna have to work together, both as a city, um, and as a school system, to see what we can identify for additional funding and/or the contingencies that are gonna have to exist for inflation. What are we, what are we not doing in response to this estimate? Well, we've all decided, um, or some things that we just shouldn't compromise on. One is reducing the student capacity. I think we feel like we've already kind of, 1050 was a number that we already kind of came down a little bit on, um, three grades of 350. We don't want to reduce the size, the square footage of the, of the project. We, we just did that in response to the 30% estimate. So if you take the cuts that we took there and you add that to the fact that we're not expanding the auditorium building, the result is we have, according to the way the state calculates this, we have 141 square feet per student in this new school. The state average for new middle schools is 151. So we, we are already lean, and we don't think that makes sense to do that. We don't want to reduce the amount of daylight, um, into the spaces and into the classrooms in particular. And we have two operable windows per classroom. This is something I've spent my career arguing for in schools, and it always gets cut on budgets. We clearly do not want to cut that, and I think everybody understands why. Uh, as Ms. Torres was talking about, some of the, the importance of, of airflow in buildings. And with that in mind, we also don't want to further reduce any of the health or the sustainability goals by eliminating the geothermal system, the enhanced ventilation, that's, that's more than what code requires. And our goal of getting the building off of fossil fuels. I say further reducing because we've already took off, we took the solar panels out of the project, we couldn't afford those. We're not doing building B, so we're not fixing its issues and its envelope. And even on building A, there's some areas where we're not enhancing the envelope, the, the exterior walls, when I say envelope, as much as we were originally planning to do so. We don't want to reduce security measures. I'm gonna show some of those to you tonight. And then most importantly, we don't want to delay the project because you can outweigh inflation. And as I said, making sure we have these bids back before the city council has to, has to vote on the next budget. So I want to pause there and see if Ms. Powell or Dr. Gurley have anything else they want to add on the budget numbers, or if there's any questions, because then we can move and talk about the design and where we are. Okay, shall I keep going? Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the reasons behind the design, what we're after. The, so I always like to go back to diagrams on an architect. So if you look here, what I've tried to illustrate is our current school configuration. So we have six neighborhood schools, pretty small class sizes, three to four classrooms per grade, and students spend five years there, six if they're in pre-K. From there, they make a really big jump. From there, they go to Walker, and their class size gets six times bigger in the fifth grade, and they get two years to spend there. From there, they move on. The class size stays the same, but just when they're beginning to get to know this new environment, they move to Beaufort Middle. And then from there, again, the class size stays the same, but they move here, and the school is twice as big. So each one of those dots are in scale to each other, and you can kind of see how awkward that diagram is um, in terms of growing and growing as a learner and as an individual. So what we're really trying to solve is this. This is the issue that we're trying to fix. And this is a common problem in designing middle schools across America. How do you, how do you go from these elementary schools to something big like high school? Well, this is what we're proposing, and I'm hopefully gonna show you how this comes out in the floor plans. Instead of going to a class that's six times bigger, we want to take that sixth grade and we want to break it into two learning communities that are distinct in the building, repeat that same thing in seventh grade, get to eighth grade and, and have a more blended, bigger community, and also have different relationships to how they work in the school. So we kind of gradually step up to this, this bigger, um, school. You know, it's about going from a, a very small pond to a very big lake that is CHS and what, how we do it in, in between. So we know that this also reflects what we hear from social scientists and anthropologists in terms of the group size that you can really know and have relationships with. This also reflects what we heard from people like, um, Nancy Deutsch at the Youth Next Group and UVA about, we really need to have a school within a school in terms of this bigger middle school that we're creating. And so let me show you a little bit about how those ideas are reflected in the design decisions that we've made in arranging the space. So this is your an aerial view of Beaufort. Uh, you have the Boys and Girls Club and Smith Aquatic, the white buildings in the foreground. And this is what we're proposing to, to change it to, um, with the new additions, it would be built first and then a renovation of Portion A. So if I zoom in here a little bit, what we have is, we basically have two, two-story buildings, one for the sixth grade, one for the seventh grade. So you divide those grades and each have a level. And then the entire top floor of the current building A at Beaufort would be the eighth grade, that, that bigger circle. So here, I've turned you around 180 degrees. Now, boys and girls and, and Smith Aquatic are the top. And I want to transfer to an architectural rendering and then take you up through the building, floor by floor, to explain briefly how the project is organized. So if I take a slice down at the bottom and zoom in a little bit, this is the athletics area. So you see a, a full-size gym with, um, two fitness rooms, an outdoor fitness space, team rooms, a weights, a weight space, um, I mean, a weight room, um, and inclusive bathrooms. And I'll get to that in a little bit about what I mean by inclusive bathrooms. So that entire area is athletics. It could be partitioned off or closed off from the rest of the school for evening events and after-hours events and weekends events. And also, security, one of the things that we're trying to do is all, of course, all of the exterior doors will be locked all the time, and they will have electronic strikes that they can be easily programmed. So the, the door control issue, um, becomes a lot easier. But we're also looking at layers of security inside the building. So it, on these floor plans, every spot where you see that red X, when we go into lockdown mode, and I understood that this, this school went and had to go into lockdown mode today, those doors, if they're held open, they will automatically shut. If they're already shut, they'll automatically lock. And so the building will allow for a, a higher degree of partitioning and hopefully also do it in a way that's not alarming. I think ideally, we, we need to get to a point where these lockdown drills aren't themselves a source of trauma for our students. So that's one of the things that I think is, is great about, um, what we're able to do. The challenge here, when you lay this out, is that you have to always be able to get out of the space, right? If the space is on fire, you need to be able to get out of it, but you also need to be able to have those doors shut, and someone can't get in it. Both those things have to occur. So if we move up a level, um, and zoom in here, you can see our first learning community. So this is the lower level, uh, where you see seventh grade classrooms. And then you see the lowest level, um, above that, where we have three art room classrooms that are labeled studio. There's an outdoor art terrace, so indoor/outdoor learning space. There's a family support space. This is something that Mrs. Powell and I have talked about a good bit, that we saw in another project that we thought was good. This is a space that will have a, a, a kitchenette, a refrigerator, a freezer, a washer and a dryer, a bathroom, a place for students to go, um, before school and after school for, for the type of support that they may, may need for things that they don't have at home, that we're excited about. You see the, the lower floor of the student commons in the middle. And then at the bottom right side of the screen is the existing cafeteria and kitchen, which you get fully renovated, but stay in the same place. Again, you see the layers of security that, that lock down. So if you look at that seventh grade, on the two ends of it, there's some doors that lead to the rest of the school, and there's some doors that lead to a staircase out. Those automatically lock, and so within that learning community, um, there's a, a good deal of security. Um, and we're doing this even for big spaces like the gym and for the cafeteria as well. If I go up another level, this is the main level of Building A, and I zoom in here. I think this is a view where you really kind of get the idea of this diagram. So you see this half of the sixth grade at the top of the screen. You see half of the seventh grade on the left side, and then you see all of the eighth grade on that one floor. The, we also have, the seventh grade begins to slowly get a little more integrated with the rest of the school by having the science rooms being used by the seventh grade that are currently part of the Beaufort Science Academy. So, um, whereas the sixth grade, you can see the very top of the screen, has science rooms within their learning community. So a little more time and space to be together in a smaller learning community before you work your way up to the larger school. The STEM space in the library, uh, will stay as they are and renovated as well. And admin, of course, comes out of the hole and comes up to the front door where it belongs and where you can keep an eye on people that are approaching the building. Um, a lot of layers of security here to make this work. Doors that would close down, the added benefit of some of these doors. We're gonna add doors at all the stairs, the open stairs that come up from the, the cafeteria. So that's gonna cut noise down. So that's an example of doors that would be shut all the time. But if you, if we pulled the, the lockdown trigger, however that, that works, they, they lock. Um, so this is the auditorium project that is being designed, and we will get a price on it from a bidder. Um, so here, we're going to two band rooms, two orchestra rooms, an expanded stage with a movable partition that allows that space to act as a drama room and a chorus room. So it would, it would be nice to have this. I think we all need to have our eyes wide open that this was not in the budget that was approved. And given where things are going, probably is not occurring unless we find another, a donor or another source of funds. And then here, there would a, again, be layers of, of security that would lock down, uh, when the school went into that mode. Finally, we'll go up to the top floor, and since this is smaller, I can zoom in a little closer and talk a little bit more about the details here. So this is half of the sixth grade. So one of the benefits of a learning community design like this is that instead of grouping all of your classes together by subjects, so you have a hallway with all the math teachers or hallway with all the English teachers, you blend those subjects together and have, um, a full learning community. And the sixth graders that are part of that learning community, they never go down to those sixth grade classes below. They're always working with this group of seven to eight teachers, getting to know this roughly 150, 180 students. We're also, as part of that, have a dis, a distributed admin idea. So there's an office there in the middle, and so either an instructional coach or an assistant principal would be distributed and part of each one of these learning communities. They're also organized around the breakout spaces in the center. So those are spaces that classrooms would have, um, glass view into and allow for project-based learning and breaking the class into and taking some students and putting them here to work on things and collaborative spaces, all within this kind of smaller, secure learning environment. And then finally, um, a teacher workroom and a, a s, a special ed room. I know that, that we use a lot of different terms for that, 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 um, that room, but designers, we called them sped rooms. So a self-contained, meaning it's part of the learning community, part of that sixth grade and not else somewhere in, in the project. We have some of those as well, but, um, lots of different ways for learning, uh, for our students that have special needs. Um, and then here, the two ways out that would lock down. So that's the project, and that gets us to about a capacity of, um, a little, a little more than our 1050 goal. So that's the project and that gets us to about a capacity of um, a little, a little more than our 1050 goal. 1065 is how that calculates. So with that, as the overview of the building, I want to talk a little bit about inclusive bathrooms. This is an example of one from a high school in Portland, Oregon. And what you see here is that we reduce the private part of the bathroom to a stall that is completely private. That has a floor-to-ceiling door and just a toilet in there. And then that is grouped in an area that is open, that is public, that you flow through. And the sinks and the mirrors and the um. The water fountains are all part of this public space. So there's a lot of benefits to this in terms of um, better privacy for, for everyone. It's easier to maintain because if one toilet bust. A, a female or a male or a trans maintenance person, consular person can come and deal with that one bathroom toilet without shutting down an entire bathroom. And it, and it really improves security. We all know that bathrooms are the one area in the school that we have a lot of issues. Because you can't put a camera in it and they're really the one space in the school that is, that is kind of run by the students. So that's why things occur in bathrooms and always have. And so this is a really um, exciting way of, of dealing with that. Um, and solving not just issues that require policies like the one you talked about earlier tonight. But also solve um, behavior problems in the school by keeping these open. So these are three examples, one in Maryland, one in um, Utah and one in Oregon. We have talked to the designers and the administrators from all three of these schools. We've put them in touch with Dr. Gurley, with Ms. Powell, with other folks, so they can call and, and talk to them about how they're operating. And I think everyone is really comfortable now that this is a really good solution. To, to a lot of problems that we have. So on the left there, you see a picture of your current bathrooms. If you talk to students at Buford, the first thing they'll tell you is the bathrooms, the bathrooms, the bathrooms are the, are the top issues. Not only do they, are they problematic, but they don't even meet accessibility code. And of course ADA was passed in 1990. So here on the right, you see a floor plan of what the new bathrooms would look like. Both in the renovated areas and in the new construction areas. So individual stalls, floor-to-ceiling doors, each one of those stalls has a floor drain in it in case that toilet overflows. And then outside of that is public space. Those sinks have a low wall, that's not a tall, tall wall in front of it. And so, and you can move freely through it and see what's, what's going on. We talked to our principal in Utah and when she said, you know, we built this school, a new school and leading up to it. Ninety percent of the phone calls and emails I got from parents were about the bathrooms. The week after we opened, I had one phone call about the bathrooms and it was to say how great they were. And so it, it's a really um, great way of designing your way out of a problem that seems complicated. And so um, there's, there's not going to be a need for a bathroom policy here, right? The staff will still have the option for single bathrooms that they alone have a key to. So they don't have to go to the same bathroom area with the students. They could choose if they want to. So we're, we're excited about this as, as a good option of how things go. And I think that someone told this to me that one of the designers that we talked to is like, that really stuck with me. The goal is that if you think about the signs that we have to put on doors, the sign should say what's behind the door, not who gets to walk through the door. So I think if we can get to that with the design, then we, we fix a lot of problems that we have. Okay, I got two more pieces for you. One is this graph that we have tried to create, you know, something that we've done um, with the project. We've decided, and you may have noticed on the opening slide, to start referring to this as the Charlottesville Middle School Project. That's essentially what we're building. And because reconfiguration is a clunky name that people don't get. But this, this is kind of a chart that shows the impacts of a reconfigured school system. So if you are in the seventh grade, if you just started in the seventh grade or lower, this project's going to impact you. So the vast majority of your students in your school system are being impacted by this. If you're, if you just started seventh or sixth, you will go to school at Buford during construction. There will be a construction site going on and that will affect um, the school. If you are in fifth and fourth, you will be, when we open up the new part, even though we're still renovating. You will go to the new learning communities, which will eventually be six and seven. You'll be the first classes to go to that. If you are in the third and second grade right now, you will be the last two classes to go to Walker as fifth grade and sixth grade. And then you will move together as those two cohort, cohorts up to the middle school. If you are in the first grade or below, you are staying in your elementary school for fifth grade. So the vast majority of your parents and your students in the school system now are affected by this project. Hopefully in a, in a very good way. If we stay on schedule. So let's talk a little bit about what it's going to look like at Buford during, during construction. So we get a lot of questions about this and we want to make sure everyone is very clear-eyed about it. We had a great meeting in our office with the Boys and Girls Club, folks from the city, folks from the school system. The Cultivate Charlottesville folks that run the garden a couple of weeks ago to really go over this in detail. And make sure everyone on the site really understood what was coming and could express any concerns about it. So this is what you have now. The yellow dash line shows where the buses come in and turn around and go, come back out. And blue is the parent drop-off. And you see the four buildings that are part of the middle school and the two buildings that are part of the Boys and Girls Club and Smith Aquatic. Next year, coming fast, um, in the spring, it's going to be time to start taking stuff out of building C. Anything that we want to keep and use, the gym building. Which, which I noticed when we had severe weather earlier this week, the activities had to be canceled because the building's leaking. So I think we're all excited about tearing that thing down soon. And then anything with the garden that needs to be relocated and moved, including the soil. There's some concern about that and finding a spot either onsite or offsite or a combination between the two. So th- those are things that we're going to have to do in a few months. From there, we get into the beginning of the 2023, 24 school year. And that red line represents the construction fence. So everything inside that red line with the red hatch pattern is, is off limits to the public. That's where the contractors will be staging and where they'll be building. So we'll start off by drilling the geothermal well field. That is our central energy source uh, for the, for the building. And by demolishing building C and by building a construction access road. At that point, the beginning of next, of the 23 school year, next year, the existing entrance to Buford will be closed. So everyone will come in and out that top level. So if, if we're going to keep admin where it is or move some of admin, those are all discussions that need to be taking place right now. So we're ready for that next school year. As we come further along and get to the spring um, and the summer and then the following school year, the new building will start to take shape. One of the things that we're hoping to do, if I kind of flip back and forth between these two, is if you look at the Boys and Girls Club there. We're hoping after we get a lot of those wells drilled and some of the grading done, that we pull that construction fence back. And at least have a small playfield that could be used by the Boys and Girls Club, by the school and by the community. The Boys and Girls Club has been very generous to offer their building to act as the gym for the school while the gym is, is, is gone. And then here you can see the beginning of the footprint of the new school starting to be formed. And this part would be complete by the end of the 24, 25 school year. Late that spring, we do a little bit of work uh, to complete this loop road. And so there'd be a few weeks where the lot, the Boys and Girls Club is not available while we finish that road and get that ready. And then come the summer, we'll actually have two different construction fences. We'll have one where we're trying to let the new sports field grow in. It'll be, it'll be off limits that summer, even though it'll be ready, so we get the turf in. We still need a little bit of construction staging area on that left side of the field. And then we move over to um, put a fence up over the summer to redo the bus loop, which um. Will become the new car loop and expand the parking. So that's how it would look in the summer of 25. There's going to be a lot to do, including moving out of building A into the new construction, demolishing building D. And then as we get into the 25, 26 school year, that's what the construction fence looks like. It's basically around building A and what, where building D used to be. And that will be the construction staging and lay-down area. We'll have the new bus loop working and the new parent loop working for that first year. And then when we complete, we'll look like this. And we will have achieved reconfiguration. You'll notice on here, I have left off some of the site alternates. So if you looked the, the, underneath the sports field, it's kind of blank down there. If I move over one, these are some of the things that we're talking about. Bidding as alternates, basketball courts, the walking track around the field, the field-level parking, which would be tough not to have. And the, the rebuilt garden you see in the bottom right corner. And then in a perfect world, of course, building B is also done and expanded, is how we get there. And that is what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
A lot of good stuff, a lot of good updates, appreciate that. Appreciate the work that you and, and Mike continue to do, the communication that you and Dr. Gurley and everybody has had with the city. So we look forward to moving forward with this. Any questions from anybody? Ms. Bryce Morseburger?
This might be further down the road, the question, but you were laying out the timetable and I have random fears. And one of them is asbestos and things like that. So when the kids are, like when you're tearing down or demolishing things, is it during the summer? Like how does it work so that like they're not exposed to whatever is in like the old, old buildings while you're demolishing things?
Sure, so I, I, I think. I had it up there in the schedule, June 9th is your last day of school this year? Does that sound about right? So ideally, you know, again, we're going to get a bid back. And the city council is, even though they're allocating money for the FY, the fiscal year that won't start till July 1st. We're going to have to sign a contract to get someone going and hopefully that's going to be enough to get going early. So as soon as bell rings and everyone leaves for summer, we could do the demolition. So the demolition of C and a few years later of D, we could do during the summer. If that does bleed into the school year, this is done all the time on occupied school sites. And they um, can, there's a lot of different things they can do from, from watering the building down to keep dust from going. When I think about it, I'm not sure that building C has any asbestos in it. I, I can't see any. I, I know it's in A, I know it's in B, um, I don't think it's in D. So, but this is done all the time um, and handled on much more urban and crowded sites than this one. And we, I, it's, it's a very valid concern and I, and we'll, we'll have it taken care of.
Any other questions? Ms. Gurley?
Hard to say, you know, thank you for all of your work. Um, the time creep is a concern and so I trust that everybody will be in communication and whatever we need to do as a board. To keep this project moving forward and on time and on schedule to the extent. We know that there are factors outside of our control that are going to impact, but I just desperately don't want us to be the reason something gets delayed.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft?
Thank you very much. It's, it really is helpful to see um, the whole scope of this, you know, and moving forward and what the pieces look like. Um, I was wondering, just a couple of things, I was wondering if um, given the recent uh, congressional passage of the, you know, the. Bill that has all the climate measures and all the money for that. Might there be money for, to do solar panels or to do some energy efficiency um, work? Might we be able to get some federal money for that? And we may not know the answer to that now, but.
How, do you know anything about that?
I know that there are things in there for um, you know, your average household, they're, they're extending the solar credits and things like that. I don't know what's in there for institutions, but it's certainly something we can, in partnership with the city, keep an eye on, so.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. I forgot my second one, so maybe you can come back to me.
The project is designed to be solar-ready. We've got, we'll have the conduits in place, we'll have spaces for the inverters and we just have to figure out a way to buy panels.
Yeah, I remembered. So I would, I would hope that we would be able to have this presentation together with city council, school board and city council sometime in the near future. Anyway, just want to put that out there. I think it would be really important for them to see the entire scope of what we're talking about now.
Happy to do that.
Mr. Bryant?
I just want to say thank you all for all of your hard work and keeping us updated. And I just can't wait to see the day when those shovels go in the dirt. Break the ground, can't wait. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, any other comments? All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we will have, it should be Ms. Powell, yep, Ms. Powell with the enrollment update.
Hello again. So it's that time of year, we don't have what I would consider final numbers, but we've got a pretty good idea of where we are with our enrollment and class sizes. I can do that, it's fine, thank you, thanks Leslie. So um, as of end of day yesterday, these are our numbers. And uh, I, the key takeaway here is that our responsible and serving number, which we have students enrolled in our school system. Who are not served within our brick walls, so that's our total enrollment. But um, as far as who we're responsible for and who we're serving in our buildings, it's another term that closely resembles that, is that average daily membership or ADM. Our numbers have basically recovered fully to the range of where we were pre-pandemic. When you compare the fall of 2019 before the pandemic, school closures in March of 20, we're within 15 students of that number. So that was a headline for me, as I've been watching these numbers. The other thing you should know is that um, we weren't sure, when we were working on the budget last year, enrollments were still a little down. We didn't know when or how the recovery would, would look for Charlottesville. So our budget, we used actually the state's enrollment projection for us for budget purposes, which is pretty conservative and we are well above that um, target. So we're no problems with state funding in relation to our enrollment. Happy to answer any questions, but those are the numbers there. Little over 4,400 students, okay. So class sizes, when we look at class sizes. K3 actually has target max numbers that are set by the Department of Education. The program is called the Class Size Reduction Program. And you should know that all of our schools are well below the VDO class size reduction targets. Those numbers are provided in the first column and again. Those numbers only apply to grades K3 as far as a strict target. So Burley Moran, for example, has a maximum of 24, Clark has a maximum of 19 and so forth. Those maximums are based on um, uh, economic indicators for those schools. Students that have, if the higher your percentage of students in poverty, the lower your target class size or your target maximum class size is. So um, one thing to understand, when you look at like fourth grade at Burley Moran and at Venable. Venable in particular, I mean, that is the largest one that we have. It is in the fourth grade, not in K3. However, we still will meet the um, targets because the actual calculation brings into consideration. All the different instructional personnel who are in the building serving the, those students. So for example, the PE teacher, um, one-fifth of that person, 20% is allocated to each grade. Same for art, your reading specialist, things like that. So that's not to say that those classes are where we want them to be class size-wise, but we are certainly within the requirements of the state. And I just want to make that clear. And so the last slide I have for you is just to look at the average class sizes at Walker, Buford and CHS. And so you'll see that um, the averages are in the top grid and I just looked at it, of course, by the major subject. And I just looked at it, of course, by the major subject areas, the core subject areas. The maximums that are associated with those averages are also provided. It was very clear to me, looking at the numbers, that our larger class sizes are in more advanced classes. And that, and just as an example, the CHS English classes, any class that had 24, 25, or 26 students in it was an AP class, AP class, an honors class, or a DE section, which DE stands for dual enrollment. So when you're looking at those numbers, I just wanted to also give that perspective. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these numbers.
Ms. Morrison, Bryce, Lashandra. Sorry.
When you're looking at the class sizes and you're talking about the maximum, at what point do you start a new class? Like if it's, if the number is 24...
So there are, there are classes if, I'll go back as if I'm not able to drive here, Leslie. Wait a minute. Why isn't it going back? All right. Thank, thank you, Leslie. So certainly, that Venable class and fourth grade is one where we have been discussing, you know, adding a class there. It's challenging to make that type of change, you know, this time of the year. But that's not to say it's out of the question. It's something that Dr. Odie, Dr. Gurley, and senior staff has been in discussion about.
Yep. And we have been monitoring that. And specifically, we've been monitoring that one really closely. And we are looking at the 10-day enrollment across our school division. So if there are some classes where the numbers are low, we may have to have some difficult conversations. We've been monitoring those things all summer long. And, you know, I've had some very difficult conversations that they're just really, it's never a good time to collapse a classroom. And so we've been having conversations about systems thinking. And most certainly, we know that, you know, specifically in the case that you're referring to, when you, when we talk about 25, 26, 27 students in the classroom, and you add, you know, students with disabilities, you're adding English, English significant numbers of English language learners, we most certainly need to reevaluate. And so we will be putting some support in that. And we are also taking a hard look at some of the classes that have some very low enrollment.
And this, the challenge we have in Charlottesville is six elementary schools in 10 square miles. So projecting enrollment is kind of challenging as it is. But then when you're actually trying to project exactly where the students are going to land within six square miles, because we have a fair amount of mobility within the city limits, and then also back and forth with the county. It, it's challenging, but we, you know, we make, we make adjustments through the summer as we see things unfolding. This particular piece didn't become really clear until, you know, as we rolled into August. And as Dr. Gurley said, it is hard when, you know, for teachers and students to make, you'd like to avoid changes in August if you can, but sometimes it's necessary, depending on all those factors Dr. Gurley mentioned.
And then also the middle school, I believe it was the middle school. I was concerned about, I guess, the math classes. I mean, they're all large, but I know we still have to address the accreditation. So I was wondering about that as well. Like, when does that, those classes...
So again, the larger class sizes, I gave the CHS English as an example, but the larger class sizes are in the higher level math where students perhaps are working more independently. I don't, when I look at the like L sections or math that is not as advanced for the grade level that it's serving, I, you don't see the high, the higher numbers like that in general. So I do see, I'm not an expert on master scheduling. I pretty much forecast the numbers and just watch class sizes. But in general, that's something that impressed me as I looked through the numbers, looking for the maximums, is the types of classes where I saw those numbers were not classes where, or sections where students would likely be, you know, need more supports.
Right. Those, so those, those classes specifically where, you know, more vulnerable students, those courses, those classes where students need more of those tier two and tier three supports, those are not the larger, those are not the larger classes.
When we were looking at like CHS, for example, I consulted with Dr. Gurley because I wasn't sure how that worked. And really, I know that the students, they get more weight with their GPA when they reach for those classes, and there's just simply a little bit more demand than supply there. But you don't, I don't see the school as sacrificing the support for the more vulnerable students in order to offer all those options for our students.
Mr. Bryant? Any questions? Mr. Morse? Dr. Kraft?
I was just wondering if we're facing any capacity issues now with our enrollment having recovered at any of the schools?
So you may recall that before the pandemic, back in 2012 was when the growth really started, if you look back at our charts. And then just before the pandemic, we had about two years, two years back to back where we were sort of leveling off. We didn't decline, but we sort of leveled off. So all I can say is, in response to that, is we're back in that, on the plateau, so to speak. I think that what's going to drive the next spike would be some of the movement I see with affordable housing, now that I've been out in the community a lot more, working on transportation. And you see, not that I hadn't been seeing it, I've been checking out South First Street because that's going to be the first one that, that materializes. The redevelopment of South First Street is the first one that's for family housing, right? So those are things that, you know, we have a, we've been working with Mike Goddard and his team on a modular plan for Jackson Villa, should we need it. But then the one coming behind that is Friendship Court. And that's way more units, so.
Ms. Gurley? So, thank you.
All right. And Ms. Hoover could not be with us this evening. So Ms. Powell is going to do our budget calendar for us.
Yes. So I'm just going to talk briefly about what's new in this proposed budget calendar. One thing that is new is a survey at the, at the, early in the process to more intentionally front load, make an effort to front load more staff input earlier in the process. So you'll see that survey there. And the other change that is, you know, worth noting is, you remember, I'm sure you do, the Saturday work session that always falls on the MLK holiday weekend. We have received feedback from certain folks. You know, some people would prefer that that not be something that we keep. So instead of that work session being on Saturday, we're looking, it's moved to, the proposal is Thursday, January 19th, 5:00 PM here. And other than that, we're continuing to make use of Zoom. One good thing that came out of the pandemic is our ability to do more outreach with the PTOs via Zoom. It's very efficient. You'll still see that in, in the play, in the proposal. Happy to entertain questions.
And one thing that we, I do want to note, in the first version that was uploaded to ESB, we had the PTO leadership meeting after the board work session. So we did, in this, in the version that's being presented by Ms. Powell, we moved that to Thursday, the 13th, so that we will have an opportunity to go over the survey results with them before the meeting with the school board. So thank you for that.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Gurley.
Any questions?
And we will be bringing this back next, in the month of October for approval, for action.
All right. So if anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to email those in before then. Thank you.
And Ms. Chuck's going to come forward. Denise Johnson could not be with us this evening, but the team's been working really hard as it relates to the students who live in West Haven and where they go to school. And so we're going to have a conversation this evening and, and talk about some next steps. Thank you, Ms. Chuck, for leaning into that for us.
Thank you. Good evening again, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Gurley. I am standing in for Denise Johnson, who could not be here tonight, but I do appreciate her work on this presentation. And moreover, I really appreciate just her, her work facilitating school and community conversations as we make decisions that impact students today and as we reexamine inequitable choices that we have made in the past. So based on our commitment to equity, we recommend a school reassignment for the West Haven community from its current school, a Burnley Moran, to its true neighborhood school, Venable Elementary. This decision right's historic wrong that I will discuss shortly, but it's also the result of several years of community engagement with the West Haven community. We deeply appreciate the opportunity to work with this neighborhood as we develop a path forward and as we've been working on this path for a few years. And on behalf of Charlottesville City Schools, I would like to apologize to past and current families in the West Haven neighborhood for this historic and recent mistreatment. I will give a brief history of this, an overview of this history. And this is really based on Ms. Johnson's research and her conversations with Mr. Bryant, with Dr. Alvin Edwards, with Leslie Thacker, and Ms. Ursula Inge and her family. Thanks to, really, thanks to everyone. I would also like to just say that Ms. Lucille Smith sets a very high bar for documenting our educational history in her recent book, Unforgettable Jackson P. Burley Middle, uh, High School, excuse me. And I hope that we are inspired by her work to document more thoroughly our own larger history. So very briefly, if you don't mind advancing one. In 1954, the Supreme Court ruled in Board versus Brown of Education that racial segregation of children in public schools was unconstitutional. Locally, in 1958, the US District Court ordered 10 black students to Venable and two to Lane High School. Instead, as part of massive resistance, the schools were closed and private schools opened to teach white students. A year later, massive resistance was overturned. Schools reopened in the Charlottesville 12, desegregated Venable and Lane. In 1965, the Charlottesville City School Board created the concept of neighborhood schools, but it was clear that white Charlottesville did not consider black families to be their neighbors. Lines were drawn to sustain segregation with students in the West Haven community sent first to McGuffey and later to Burnley Moran. If you mind advancing, please. Many years later, in 2003, the school board voted to reassign the 10th and Page neighborhoods to Venable, but they fell short of reassigning students who lived in West Haven. And on paper, even today, West Haven students remain zoned to Burnley Moran. However, in 2019, the decision was made to begin righting these wrongs. At that time, Charlottesville City Schools worked with City of Promise to provide families who lived in West Haven the option of attending Burnley Moran or Venable. And today, we are requesting, if you don't mind advancing again, thank you, that the school board move into the final phase of this transition by voting to reassign the West Haven community to its true neighborhood school, Venable Elementary. This will be effective immediately for new students. We are officially requesting that the Venable become the assigned school for new students who, who move to the West Haven community. We would also like to provide the option for all current West Haven students who are choosing Burnley Moran to remain at Burnley Moran until they move on to Walker. As you can see on this slide, they would apply as out of zone students, and they would need to provide their own transportation to continue in future years. If this is approved, we will have transitional conversations with the community as needed, really just continuing these conversations that have been underway. And we would especially focus on those who are directly impacted, to help them understand this decision and their choices. Thank you again for allowing us to present this information. And while I am not Denise Johnson, and I did not exactly prepare this presentation, I think among us, we can probably field questions.
Thank you so much for this. Long overdue.
Long overdue.
Any comments, questions from board members?
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that apology. Because when I looked at this last night, 1965 stuck out because I was a part of that group. I lived in Hardy Drive in 1965. I didn't understand then why we had to walk all the way to McGuffey School because that was a neighborhood school for children who lived in Belmont. So we were just sort of just on our own little island. And when I saw this, it took me back. It was a very difficult year, transition year from Jefferson Elementary to McGuffey School. And we are gathering at Jefferson, that group of students, next week. 50 years, 1960 is when we started Jefferson. And it's going to bring back a lot of memories. We walked through Commerce Street. Vannac Hill was demolished. There was nothing left, just the street. And we walked two and four every day. There were no buses to McGuffey School from Hardy Drive. To be humiliated and thought of as less. I've already told the story. You can go to Virginia Historical Society. It's been recorded, a nine-minute interview. And so we are gathering together next week, that group of students from Hardy Drive.
I, I don't know if you would like a representative there, but I certainly hope that that group hears and understands how sincere this apology is.
As a chair of another group, I will share that apology.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Anybody else? I just have a quick question. So for students that, that are going to apply to continue to attend Burnley Moran with the out-of-zone application, so normally, students have to provide their own transportation if they're out of zone to attend the school. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is it fair to assume that those students would go to the top of, like the out-of-district request? Like they would...
Absolutely. Dr. Corv, if the students want to stay and if they can provide transportation, she will most certainly keep them. I mean, she, she's very flexible. We have those kind of conversations all the time. So yes, she would, she would move them forward. She would continue to allow them to stay. But we, we did, and when we thought about how we implement this, and as we thought about what are the blind spots, unintended consequences, we did say that let's just use our current out-of-zone, our current practices for that. And, and so that's where we landed with this, to treat it. And, and so we know people, if our families want to continue to do this, they'll, they'll make a way. I mean, some of them drive, some of our families drive to Burley Moran right now anyway, and don't use the transportation, so.
And do we know if there are younger siblings that might be, would they be afforded the opportunity to continue with the school of their older siblings' choice?
So that's already a part of the out-of-zone process because we talked about it. So initially, we said we would allow only fourth graders to have the option. But in our current, in our current procedures, we do allow for there to be some childcare, if there's some childcare things. And so if we, we can, we can, we will allow them to, if you have younger students, but we also want to work with our families to talk about what the implications. But you want to do something that you can sustain. And so if they want their kindergarten, because we will, I think we'll be left with 13 students. We'll be left with the 13. And if they have a kindergarten coming, then the parents just have to think about what are the implications and is this something you can sustain? And I know we've heard, I talked to a parent when I was out in the neighborhood, and she said, well, I don't know if I really would want one of my children to be at one school and one at another. So I'm going to need to make the decision whether we're just going to go to Venable next year, whether that's what we would do. But we've been having those conversations with our families. Great question, though.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. And now we have Carolyn Swift, who will be bringing our accreditation update. And Ms. Swift will be, she'll be moving through the presentation, but if you do have a question, as if, when she gets to a slide, you know, feel free to ask, because I think there are about 30 slides and you may forget what the question was, but we'll try to keep a good little pace as we move through.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. Tonight, I would like to provide an overview of the school accountability and the accreditation ratings. Then we'll review the preliminary accreditation results by school. And at the end of the presentation, we'll discuss the plans we have in place to address the data and then answer any questions you may have. School accountability is based on the requirements included in the standards of accreditation that measure student performance on multiple school quality indicators. The school quality indicators provide information on overall student achievement, achievement gaps, and student engagement. Performance on each school quality indicator is rated at one of three performance levels. Level one, performance meets or exceeds the state standards for the indicator or making adequate progress. Level two, performance is near the standard or making sufficient progress. And level three, performance is below the standard. In response to the indicators, all schools must develop a multi-year improvement plan that includes goals and action steps to support continuous improvement on each school quality indicator, regardless of performance level. The division will monitor these plans for implementation and impact throughout the school year. For accreditation purposes, it only includes math, science, and English. History is not included. Because students are assessed annually in grades three through eight, reading and math, it is possible to compare year-to-year performance. This past school year, student growth was also calculated from fall to spring using data from the Fall Growth Assessment that measured student progress over the course of the year. In English, the combined rate for grades three through eight students who passed the SOL test in reading and students who didn't pass but showed significant growth, including English learners who made progress towards English proficiency. At the middle school level, the English combined rate does include the grade eight writing SOL test. So in order to be rated level one in English, 75% or more of students must pass the reading SOL or show growth. In math, the combined rate for grades three through eight includes students who passed the SOL test in math and students who didn't pass but showed significant growth. And in order to be rated level one in math, 70% or more of students must pass the math SOL or show significant growth. In science, the school quality indicator is based on the overall pass rate, and it does not report for achievement gaps, and it does not include growth. In order to be rated level one in science, 70% or more of students must pass the SOL science test. And the science tests are administered in grades five, eight, and at the high school level. High school rates do not include growth, but does include English learners who made progress towards English proficiency. For achievement gaps in reading and math, a school will remain at a level one if no more than one student group is at a level two. If there are two or more student groups at a level two, or no more than one student group performing at a level three, the overall achievement gap performance is rated level two. If two or more student groups are performing at a level three, the overall achievement gap performance is rated level three. However, it is important to note that final performance is based on the current year data, unless the cumulative three-year rate is more favorable. The cumulative three-year rate will use data from the 1718, 1819, and 2122 school years. Ratings on graduation and the completion index are based on performance for the most recently graduating cohort of students, or on a three-year average. A high school's four-year cohort dropout rate is based on performance during the most recent year or on a three-year average. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the school year, regardless of reason. 10% of days missed in a school year equates to 18 days of missed instruction. Performance on this indicator is based on the current year or a three-year rate. However, for accreditation year 2223, the final performance level for chronic absenteeism will not be used in the determination of school accreditation status due to COVID absences and quarantine protocols. The official on-time graduation rate and the cohort dropout rate for the class of 2022 will be released at the end of this month, and we will share that information at the next meeting. The 2223 accreditation results are based on the data from the 2122 school year and compared to the previous year data from the 1819 school year. The 2021 and 2122 accreditation years were waived due to school closures. With that said, all of our schools are accredited for this school year. However, three of our schools are accredited with conditions. This means that a school has at least one school quality indicator at a level three. Schools that have a level three for any indicator will undergo academic review to help them identify and analyze instructional and organizational factors affecting student achievement. The review process will focus on the systems, processes, and practices that are being implemented at the school level. This year, we have four schools that will go through the academic review process and then will help drive school improvement efforts. And this is Burnley Moran, Clark, Walker, and Beaufort. So before I present the data, it should be noted that all of our schools showed growth. However, we realize that we have been charged with a task much greater than growth. With this in mind, we will work tirelessly until 100% pass rate has been reached at all levels. First, we'll start with Burnley Moran Elementary School. Here is the three-year comparison of data from 1718, 1819, and 2122. As you can see, there was an increase in both reading and math when compared to previous years. Nineteen students, or 6% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 11%. Burnley Moran Elementary School is rated level one for performance and academic achievement for English and math. The achievement gap in English is rated level three, and math is rated level two. Burnley Moran will undergo academic review this year due to the performance level and the achievement gap for English. Now let's take a closer look at the breakdown of each academic gap group. The achievement gap in English is rated level three because there are two student groups performing at a level three. The black student group at 63% and students with disabilities group at 65%. There is one student group at level two, the economically disadvantaged student group at 72%. The achievement gap in math is rated level two because there is one student group performing at a level three, the black student group at 60%. Here is the three-year comparison at Clark Elementary School. There was an increase in English, and in math, there was a decrease when compared to previous years. Sixty-nine students, or 26% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism this past year as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 9%. Clark Elementary School is rated level one for performance and academic achievement in both English and math. Clark is accredited with conditions due to the achievement gap in math that is rated level three and will undergo academic review this year. Clark is rated level two for the achievement gap in English because there is one student group performing at a level three. The students with disabilities group is at 61%. There are two student groups at level two, black student group at 67%, and the economically disadvantaged group at 73%. In math, they are rated level three for the achievement gap because there are two student groups performing at a level three. The black student group at 44% and the students with disabilities group at 43%. There is one student group at a level two, the economically disadvantaged group, at 61%. This is the three-year comparison at Greenbrier Elementary School. Greenbrier had an increase in both English and math when compared to previous years. Thirteen students, or 5% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 6%. Greenbrier Elementary School is rated level one for all school quality indicators. The achievement gap for both English and math are rated level one. For the achievement gap in English, the students with disabilities group is rated level one because the failure rate decreased by more than 10% from the previous year, and that's noted as R10. This is calculated based on pass rates, not growth. In 1819, the pass rate was 40%, and this past school year, the pass rate was 71%. Here is the three-year comparison at Jackson Villa Elementary School. Jackson Villa had an increase in both reading and math when compared to previous years. Fifty-one students, or 18% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 9%. Jackson Villa Elementary School is rated level one for academic achievement in reading and math. They are rated level two for performance in the achievement gap in reading and math. Jackson Villa is rated level two for the achievement gap in English because there is one student group performing at a level three, the students with disabilities group at 63%. There is one student group performing at a level two, the black student group at 74%. They are also rated level two for the achievement gap in math because there is one student group performing at a level three, the students with disabilities group at 57%. This is the three-year comparison at Johnson Elementary School. Johnson had an increase in both reading and math when compared to previous years. Twenty-nine students, or 12% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 4%. Johnson Elementary School is rated level one for all school quality indicators. Johnson remains level one for the achievement gap in English because there is only one student group performing at a level two, the economically disadvantaged group at 74%. Here is the three-year comparison at Venable Elementary School. And as you can see, there was a decrease in English and in math, there was an increase when compared to previous years. Fourteen students, or 5% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 year, which was 3%. Venable Elementary School is rated level one for all school quality indicators except for the achievement gap in English, which is rated level two. As we take a closer look at the student groups, the achievement gap in English is rated level two because there is one student group at a level three. And although the students with disabilities group is listed as TS or too small, which means that there are less than 30 students in that group, the cumulative three-year rate was used, which is a level three. And there is one student group performing at a level two, the black student group at 68%. The achievement gap in math is rated level one. Now let's look at Walker Upper Elementary School. As you can see, there was an increase in English and a decrease in math and science when compared to previous years. 114 students, or 18% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to the 1819 school year, which was 10%. Walker Elementary School is rated level one for performance and academic achievement for reading and math. Walker is accredited with conditions due to the achievement gap in English, math, and science, which were rated at a level three, and they will undergo academic review this year. Walker is rated level three for the achievement gap in English because there are two student groups performing at a level three, the black student group at 62% and students with disabilities group at 65%. There is one student group performing at a level two, the economically disadvantaged group, at 72%. The achievement gap in math is rated level three because there are two student groups performing at a level three. The black student group at 53% and students with disabilities at 52%. There is one student group performing at a level two, the economically disadvantaged student group, at 68%. The science academic achievement is rated level three because the pass rate is below 65%. Here's the three-year comparison at Beaufort Middle School. And as you can see, there was a decrease in English, math, and science when compared to previous years. 143 students, or 24% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism as compared to 1819 school year, which was 11%. Beaufort Middle School is rated level one for the performance and academic achievement for math. Beaufort is accredited with conditions because there is more than one school quality indicator rated at a level three, which are the achievement gap in English, math, and the academic achievement in science. And Beaufort will undergo academic review this school year. Beaufort is rated level two for academic achievement in English because the overall rate is less than 75%. The grade eight writing SOL is calculated into the overall English performance rate, which was a 44%. The academic, excuse me, the achievement gap in English is rated level three because there is more than one student group performing at a level three. The black student group at 45%, the economically disadvantaged group at 51%, the Hispanic group at 60%, and the students with disabilities group at 53%. The achievement gap in math is rated level three because there are two student groups performing at a level three. The black student group at 64% and the students with disabilities group at 60%. The academic achievement in science is rated level three because the pass rate is below 65%. And here is the three-year comparison at Charlottesville High School. There is a decrease in English, math, and science when compared to previous years. Three hundred and fifteen students, or 25% of their student body, had chronic absenteeism compared to the 1819 school year, which was 8%. compared to the 1819 school year, which was 8%. CHS is rated Level 1 for all school quality indicators except the achievement gap in math, which was rated Level 2. At the high school level, the combined rate for English includes students who pass SOL tests in reading and English learners who made progress towards English proficiency. The achievement gap in English is rated Level 1. The student groups that have pass rates less than 75% remain at a Level 1 due to the three-year average. Math indicators at the high school level are based on the percentage of students passing SOL tests in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. The achievement gap in math is rated Level 2 because the Students with Disabilities Group is a Level 3 at a 49% pass rate. And the Black Student Group is Level 2 based on the three-year average. Academic achievement in science is rated Level 1 with a 77% pass rate. So this slide and the following slide show the statewide reading and math SOL pass rates released by the VDOE. And as you will see, our data is in line with the trends across the state for both reading and math. Moving forward, we realize there is hard work that needs to be done. And I would like to take this opportunity to discuss the plans we have in place to address the data. First, we will continue to set high expectations for all. This includes all students and all staff. This means we are ensuring that our students have equitable access to high-quality curriculum, instruction, and the supports they need to be successful. And we will continue to build instructional capacity of our teachers and leaders through sustained professional learning. Next, we must support the whole child, going above and beyond and meeting the child where they are. This includes academics, behavior, mental wellness, and family engagement. To do this, we will continue to strengthen our tiered systems of support to intervene early for students who do not make expected Tier 1 progress, and continue to activate BTSS processes to systematically and equitably guide decisions about intervention and progress monitoring. We will continue to accelerate learning for all students. This means we will design and implement learning experiences that increase the rate of learning by providing on-grade-level instruction and strategically build in key concepts students need to master grade-level work. We plan to do this by refining our implementation of literacy instruction that is grounded in the science of reading, using our core curriculum resources, and eliminating balanced literacy practices such as leveled reading and tracked word study groupings. We are increasing opportunities for writing, including writing in response to reading and writing to learn across content areas. In math, we will continue to leverage our evidence-based curriculum with a focus on fluency and engage students with challenging tasks, discourse, and open-ended problem solving to help raise math achievement for all students. We will have a priority focus on increasing the learning outcomes of our Black and Brown students. By reexamining our practices to ensure we are using a strengths-based approach, we will recognize the specific strengths and needs of the individual student and take necessary supportive actions throughout the year and for years to come. The Division will monitor school improvement plans for implementation of action steps and monitor for impact on progress towards goals and student outcomes. Our professional learning plan will focus on effective teaching strategies and culturally responsive practices to provide teachers with a clear vision of what a highly engaging classroom looks like. Instructional coaches and specialists also provide ongoing professional learning in PLCs and embed data and student work into conversations to inform instruction. We know how critical the family-school partnership is, and our teachers and staff are ready and committed to ensure our students and families have the resources and the support they need to feel connected and valued. And we will continue to promote a positive and inclusive culture in our learning communities. We know that building strong relationships are at the heart of a thriving community and are also key to promoting safety. And so in closing, and on a personal note, we know the past couple of years have been challenging. And moving forward, we have an extremely dynamic, compassionate, and intelligent leader who is working tirelessly to give the students in this division all the tools they will need to thrive in the years to come. Dr. Gurley has a great forward-thinking team around him who share his vision and passion for doing what is best for all students. We have made some wonderful additions to our staff at all levels. And with the partnership of this community and this board, we will bridge the learning and opportunity gaps and attend to the trauma our students have suffered, and we will be better together. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, sir, please.
So before we take comments from the board, I just want to say that, you know, and looking at the data, most certainly, we all have to own this. This is my data, you know, this is the result of my work. It's the result of all of our work, and this is opportunity. There's a lot of red, there's a lot to be celebrated, but there's a lot that's hidden in this data too, and this data is children. And so while we see greens at Greenbrier, when you look at that data, you see Black students who did not pass. And that denominator gets bigger when it gets to Walker. And Walker starts to look pink and red, and then Beaufort starts to look red. And then it looks different at the high school because the denominator starts to look different at the high school. And so what I have shared with our team and what we all have to do is own our part in this work. This is, we can no longer talk. And we did not talk in the 2122 school year, and we will not be talking in the 2223 school year. We will be working. You know, we are out in our community ensuring that our students make it to the bus, whether it be the cat bus, we are out there walking to schools, and we're going to continue to do that work. But we all have to be accountable for our part. So if I'm knocking on your door, you need to answer because I want to make sure your child gets to school. And that's my commitment to this work every single day. And so if we, we know we require culturally responsive teaching practices, and if this isn't the work that people want to do, or if you're unsure if this is the kind of work you can do, then ask for help. There are so many smart people in this school division, and our kids need a chance. They need to know that the people standing in front of them love them. They need to know the principal loves them, they need to know the instructional coach. They need to know that every single person in this school division values them, whether it's a custodian, the bus driver, we all have to be committed to the same things because we can change this, the needle is moving, the needle is moving upward. We do not delight in backward steps. And so we just have to roll our sleeves up and do this work because this red can turn to green, that is my commitment. We leave it better than what we found it. But this is, no, no longer are there any excuses. And so you won't get that from me today. This is our data, and it is not good data. And this is data that's telling a story about Black students who look like me, and it is unacceptable.
Thank you, sir. All right, who would like to start? Anybody have any comments, questions? Mr. Bryant?
Thank you so much for your report, and Dr. Gurley, thank you so much for the data. I know the teachers are in those classrooms and staff members working hard every day, but we got work to do. When I looked at this last night and the night before, I was just taken aback. Our children of color are not performing. And as a former professor would say to me, we got work to do to close this opportunity gap. That's how he phrases it. So the resources are here, whatever teachers need, we have got to get to work. There's no if, ands, and buts about it, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, Dr. Gurley. It doesn't look good. We got to own this, can't run away from it. All we can say at this point in time, we got to move forward in closing this opportunity gap for our Black and Brown children.
Absolutely.
I feel the same way. I guess what I'm wondering about and thinking is that, you know, we've been talking about achievement and opportunity gaps for a very long time. And whenever we talk about the data, there's always strategic plans and action plans and, you know, but we're a small division, and you look at some of these numbers, and it's like, there aren't that many, you know, Black students at a particular school, like you look at a Greenbrier. And so all the plans are great, but there are children that need specific help. And I guess I just, it feels like we've been talking about this for so long that our approach has to be different. I don't know what it looks like, I'm not an education professional, but it just feels like if we can look at kids and say, you need help, you need support, where, what's the disconnect, why the students aren't getting the support? And I remember when the New York Times article came out, I was thinking like, where are we going to be in five years, where are we going to be in 10 years? And some of the data from 2019 was before COVID. It was before the, you know, the learning loss. And so I guess just the frustration is, what are we doing different than all the other times when the data comes back and it's not what we want it to be? Because there has to be something deeper than that when you go from school to school to school, and the school can be doing great, but yet Black students or disadvantaged or economically disadvantaged or disabled, it's just, the system is broken and it feels like we need to reallocate our resources or how we think about things to make sure that the, for Walker and Beaufort to both be having issues, and those be the population of kids that need the most support, like, it's just completely unacceptable, and it's sad, and we have to do better.
Ms. Morrisberger, you know, it's before Walker and Beaufort. And I just can't say that enough. It's, if you look back at the slides and when you look at the charts where Ms. Swift pointed out, like, where the levels, while a school is green, when you look at the Black students in that group, and you have, it's either too small or the Black students didn't make the green, but then you still had five students that didn't meet with success. You know, if you have five students not meet with success at six schools, that's 30 students, that's 30 Black students that end up at Walker, who are already Level 3. So it's, it's a little bit more masked at the elementary level, but the problem starts, I mean, it's, that's why I say it's all of our problem. It's all of our opportunities to solve because it starts before there. I mean, we still have, we still have to own it once it gets to Walker and to Beaufort, but it starts before there, and, and you know, we know what, you know, not the excuse, but we know what happened during the pandemic. But we can write that, but it's about accountability, and I'm going to continue to say it. It's about accountability. I'm holding myself accountable for the pieces, but we have to, as a community, hold our community accountable each, there are several pillars to this. And so the accountability piece is the part that's missing because if I'm standing out there and I'm going to do the work, then I need someone to meet me halfway. And that's the only way we're going to change this, we're going to have to do it together.
Mr. Morris. Dr. Kraft.
Well, first, I want to really thank you for this presentation and for making, you know, the amount of data in here accessible to us so that we could really get the picture. It's really, really helpful, and I really, really appreciate it very much. And I don't have any brilliant comments to add to it. It is hard, it's hard to see this, it makes me very sad. I guess I would also, I'm glad to see that we're doing a multi-pronged approach that includes the realities of mental health issues for not just these kids, but for their families. And, you know, we have a wonderful family engagement team, and I think, you know, that will be part of it. I, I am curious, you know, to see some of the differences between the elementary schools and the success rates. You know, so it makes me just wonder, what are, what are, what's happening at one school that isn't happening at another school in the same way? So that's really what I have to say, and I really appreciate you putting all this together for us, thanks.
You're welcome. Ms. Dooly.
A comment that's maybe more geared towards the work session wrap-up is just information for us about the ability to review the school improvement plans as they're developed, moving forward, so that we can better track the efforts that are being implemented throughout the course of the year. And then, I know we've said this repeatedly, but, you know, we support you, Dr. Gurley, and need you to come to us with not only what you need, but, you know, and supporting you in the tough decisions. If there are folks that are not getting on board with this work, you have our support to make the changes that are needed on behalf of our young people. And so I don't, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for my colleagues here, but there is significant work to be done and some tough decisions that will have to be made.
Ms. Torres, can I just add one more quick thing, I'm sorry? Also, when we're talking about the data, what never makes sense to me is that kids are behind, kids are behind, elementary school, middle school, middle school, but everyone graduates on time from high school, and we expect equitable outcomes. And so that's another thing that we need to talk about because when you look at the, when you get back to the high school, I feel like the numbers are kind of, like, it hides more because, you know, you go back to a larger population, and then there's different levels of this class or that class. But I've, I've never understood how kids start off, you start off day one, you're behind, you're behind, you're behind, yet you still graduate on time. That we, we're not preparing kids or sending them out into the world. If they just, you just keep moving through, you're never, you're always going to be a little bit behind. There has to be some accountability for how kids move through Charlottesville city schools because, you know, we always talk about the white flight out. How is it that kids who have stayed with us from the beginning through high school are not getting what they need? And so that's another disconnect, is that the high school is getting left out of the conversation because, you know, it gets left out because on paper graduation rates are great, but I don't know what, what you do with the, whatever diploma level you have, you know, the two, whatever the two different kinds are. And I know we hear repeatedly about the community college telling us that like, our students are not prepared when they get there. And so there's a lot of And so there's a lot of layers to it that need to be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you for this comment. Yes, thank you for the presentation. I mean, I've sat through this for years, and, and this was a great presentation. It really made a lot of sense, so I appreciate how you presented it. So thank you. I'll try not to repeat a lot of what my colleagues have said as far as concerns and looking at the numbers. I believe with my heart, you know, that our equity and action slide, that we really do mean every single one of those things and that we've already done some of that. But I also would, you know, I'm interested in seeing what the plans look like for schools. But my question is, and I don't expect anybody to have an answer to this right now, but what does this look like for an individual student? You know, like, how do we and how can we support and provide resources? Because it is one by one. And when you look at the numbers, there is a lot masked, you know, as we go and as we creep up. So I'm really curious, and, and I don't know if that can be brought back to us at some point, like, examples of what are we going to change? And what are we going to do differently that is going to impact and support these kids, you know, at an earlier stage? But also, as we do look at all of our students who, who have been affected the last couple of years, who have lost, you know, some type or some quality of instruction, and not for lack of trying, but because of COVID and because of however they were, were receiving that instruction. I mean, we have to be seeing that. Teachers in the high school have to be seeing that and feeling that now when they sit down this first week and they're assessing what these students in, you know, a certain level math class are supposedly taking. And we know that in, in 2019, 2020, you know, kids were passed. They were given passing grades and didn't even complete the work. So, you know, fast forward two years and, and having that conversation with our teachers right now, you know, are these kids, do they even know the standards that are required to sit down and take the class that they're in? How did they get there? You know, and these are, these are tough conversations. But I hope, you know, and I, I mean, you have my support, and I believe the board's support. We need to figure this out because these, these kids, a lot of them probably don't know some of the basic math functions that might be required in, trig three or whatever they're taking right now. And, and so I hope that, I don't know, I know, I know we're all committed to doing better, and this is hard to look at. And something's got to change. So I support you, sir, and I, and everybody else. I hope we can, we can see that change. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is board response to written reports. And just for the public's sake, you know, in that, we did have a human resource update from Ms. Lewis, a school board member committees report, reports, which entails different committees and activities that school boards, school board members have participated in or been involved in in the last month. And then also the 2022, 2023 advisory committees to the school board. So that's what, what is encompassed in those board response to written reports.
And the advisory committee will come back next. This is the first read of it. It'll be updated and it'll come back next month for action.
Okay. So the advisory committee, again, just for the public, includes things like SHAB, the Special Education Advisory Committee, title, yeah, gifted, Title I, Title, yeah, CTE, there's, there's several committees. And basically, it's, and we, on several of those committees, we are looking still for parents, parent volunteers, or people to fill spots in those. But that will come back next month for action, I guess. Our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. So if anybody here in the media center would like to come to the podium, you're welcome to do so. And/or if we have anybody in Zoom land, we welcome your comments. Okay. And we are going to move then to comments from the board. And I will start with Ms. Dooly, please.
Sure. So just a quick thank you to everyone for a great start to the school year. I've had several conversations with colleagues and clients that are members of our community but don't really have any affiliation with the school system, who are talking about the positive buzz around the start to the school year. And to me, that's like exactly what we want as we're trying to promote, you know, the education of our young people being a community endeavor and not, you know, solely a task of our schools and parents. But really, it does, you know, for as cliche as it sounds, it takes a village. And so that has been really heartwarming to hear. So again, thank you to everyone for your hard work.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, and, yeah, I, I realize we did not have transportation on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to. Gee, Kim, aren't you sad about that? You know, I, I just feel like the effort that's been made here to change the whole perspective and to get these kids to school has just been enormous. And I, it seems like we've done a wonderful, masterful job of this. And I know every day you get a call or something about a kid who's not making it to school, and we still have to figure it out and, and all of that. But overall, it seems as though somehow we're doing this. And I just so deeply appreciate the efforts of everybody who's made that possible and who continues to make that possible for our kids and walk them to school and, and just be there and troubleshoot. So thank you so much for that.
Mr. Bryan?
First and foremost, I want to, I would like to do a few shout-outs. And first of all, to our teachers for, I'm sure you had a wonderful school opening. I see a lot of, a lot of information on Twitter. So exciting things going on in the classroom. Central office staff, you all work behind the scenes to do extremely important work. So kudos to you all. And Kim, Lord help you. You, you know, you are a bus lady, but you, you're working, working hard for the money to get those kids on the bus. So we do appreciate all your hard work. And thank you, Dr. Gurley. I've seen you in and out of the neighborhood, you know, up and down those streets, walking. You have set the tone for the school year. And yes, we do have a lot of work to do to close that opportunity gap. And somehow, you know, COVID has set us back, but we're going to not look back. We're going to look forward, looking forward to ensure that all of our students will have that opportunity to excel in the classroom and graduate from high school and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Let's see, Ms. Bryson Morseburger walking back in. I want to see if she wants to make a comment. But in the meantime, I'll go ahead and, and again, extend my gratitude to you, Dr. Gurley and your team for all the work getting us launched for this academic year. As Dr. Kraft mentioned, I mean, daily, pretty much, there's, you know, outreach, whether it be from a, a family member, a parent, a teacher, somebody in the community who has heard of some transportation challenges for somebody. And, you know, people are doing what we've asked them to do. You know, if there's an issue or there's a concern or a problem or a barrier, let us know. So they're letting us know. And, you know, I'm very quickly, pretty, pretty good turnaround time. I tried to keep, you know, and I elevate those to central office. And in each of those situations, it seems like they've been resolved. So it's just very impressive and impressive, you know, on the part of the community for coming together, for carpooling, for PTOs, you know, trying to organize carpooling. I want to extend thank you to Citi, you know, for continuing to support and make changes. And we know there's still a list of improvements that, you know, will, are being worked on and to be continued and worked on moving forward to keep, you know, our walkers and our riders and people safe. So thank you. And a reminder to all drivers out there, please go slowly and, and keep your eyes open and on the road. And everybody stay safe. And Ms. Morseburger, would you like to make a comment? You're good. All right. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have our superintendent's comments.
I think most of my comments have been said. I just want to publicly thank our community. This has been a community lift. I've been very appreciative of all the just extra hands and, you know, given, pointing out all of our areas of improvement. I do think that you hear us talk about Better Together, but I think we are presenting the case study for what it actually looks like. We definitely have made gallons of lemonade from the lemons that we were presented. And so I am, this community will be so much better for this and not just because of transportation, because we're gonna, we're going to have some of the best. We do have some of the best and brightest students here. And I mean that about 100% of our students. And so very soon, we will see the number 100. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. All right, and we have work session wrap-up.
So the request to review school improvement plans and then come back with, you know, examples and our plans for what, what we are doing differently.
Thank you. All right, and upcoming meetings, our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is October 6th here in the media center. So, and in the meantime, please continue to reach out to us. And you can reach us by email. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.